In addition to what my colleague is going to present briefly now, we come up with one or two points that can be submitted to the SADAC Secretariat through the structures that we have, including this platform, which would contribute to some of what we can call medium to long-term interventions in the case of a flooded or flooding scenario that may happen in the future, including the one that has emerged in Mozambique. With those words, can you please allow me to introduce Mr. Elijah Madamombe? Mr. Madamombe is a water engineer, graduated many, many years ago, because we are the youth here, I won't tell you how old. He has worked for the government of Zimbabwe for many years. At the moment, he's working for the BUCI, SAWE and Pungwe. Actually, BUCI, Pungwe and SAWE, BUPUSA, Water Commission. It's on to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lenka. The presentation which I have, I'd actually prepared for another session which we had on Friday. It was actually on the SADAC ICOS. But nonetheless, I think some of the issues which I'm going to highlight are quite relevant to what we are trying to achieve here. Right, so my presentation will just be on just a brief introduction about the cyclone that happened, Cyclone Idai. And then, well, I'll skip the definition, I think almost everyone knows about the definition of cyclones. And then the history of cyclones in Southern Africa. Then the recent impacts, it will be mainly the pictures that I will show. And then, well, we were, this presentation was made for the SADAC ICOS, but nonetheless, I think it's also relevant to what we are trying to do. Okay, cyclones. I just tried to extract some information on the history of cyclones in Southern Africa, particularly those which are hitting the basins, the Pungwe, the Buzi and the SAWE. So, from 1956, you can see that cyclones are, they're quite common weather phenomenon. But since 2000, the frequency seems to have increased. I don't know whether this is due to climate change or otherwise. It has resulted in a number of deaths, quite a lot, and also damages to properties, and a lot of people have been displaced. Lives, livelihoods have also been lost. As of now, we are still counting the cost of Cyclone Idai, but from the figures which we are getting, the death, the death rates now exceeds over 700. It is likely to actually exceed 1,000 from the information that we are getting from the Zimbabwean side now. Well, this is what actually transpired. Well, the cyclone started off in an area, it had a landfall in the area called Kilimani, with about 190 kilometers of Bayra. Then it went back into the Indian Ocean. And then, then it went and then it on land as well, then hit the coastal Bayra, and then proceeded inland to an area called Chimani-Mani, Chpinga, that's in the eastern highlands of Zimbabwe. This, the impact was actually felt from last week on Monday. That's when most of the devastation took place. I think these are some of the pictures just highlighting, I think this is the seat of Bayra after the destruction. This is in Zimbabwe, Chimani-Mani. This is a school in Chimani-Mani, where about 107 kids were trapped and seven kids passed on. This is a whole center where a business, the business center was completely submerged. Houses for civil servants were completely submerged. This was due to a landslide that happened. So at the moment, no one really knows how many people buried under this thing. But they estimate about 147 houses are actually underneath this landslide. These are mass burials. Right, this is the seat of Bayra. They estimate that over 90% of the city of Bayra has actually been destroyed. During that period, I think since last week, since last week but one on Thursday, there was no electricity and we could not even communicate. Right, this is a bridge that connects Chimani-Mani to the rest of the province. It was also completely damaged. This Bayra. As usual, kids normally suffer most during these cyclones. Access to school. Right, this is the seat of, that's Buzi now. Buzi, the devastation was even worse. You can see that okay, if you see that, that's a stadium where most of the kids and families are to regroup, waiting to be airlifted. It's a whole town. What really happened is that the, it's close to the sea, so the sea was very high. And when the cyclone hits the area upstream, we had flash floods. And the city was completely submerged. These are pictures in Bayra. Okay, right. Well, these are some of the ideas which we were just discussing during SADAC ICOS project. For those who don't know about SADAC ICOS project, this initiative by SADAC, where member states identified key hydrological stations that they wanted to be monitored and they were then equipped with real-time equipment. Part of the idea for SADAC ICOS was to make sure that you've got real-time information being transmitted to member states, to hydrological offices, so that they can be able to also issue some flood warnings. But, well, it was successful, but it also had its own problems. Some of the stations are actually down and they need to be rehabilitated. Because once you have these stations up and running, they help quite a lot for those who are doing flood forecasting. Was able to alert people on time so that they take action to go to higher ground. So some of them are not working. And the network obviously is not enough. You actually need to expand the network so that you've got a good coverage. The transmission between the stations and the national servers for some of the stations is actually down. And that needs to improve. Capacity building has also been identified as one of the challenges in this case was most of the people were trained during the SADAC ICOS to operate and maintain the monitoring systems. Some of them, they've retired, some of them, they've been promoted. And then, SADAC ICOS is actually a project. But it has proved to be very, very important and I think it needs a home. There's need to have a permanent desk, a permanent institution that actually provides a coordination role so that the objective of SADAC ICOS continue to be realized. Those of capacity building, those of ensuring that the monitoring network is working and also the transmission is working as well. And then database is also very important. For analysis purposes, if you really need want to know what is happening, whether there's a decline or there's an increase in the frequency of floods, for example, or droughts, you really need to have a big database so that you keep on getting information for analysis purposes. Yes, during the SADAC ICOS, we had the Hydra database installed, but there were also some problems for member states. For example, member states weren't able to pay for the license fees and therefore, the services were disconnected. If the database was up and running, that would have helped quite a lot for member states to be able to to have a better understanding of the climate-related risks. And then the issue of modeling. Well, this also relates to cyclones, yeah, yeah, well, sorry? Sorry? Well, well, if you are looking at the long-time analysis of events, then you need to continue to maintain as much data as possible. Because now we do not have, we have data gaps. We don't really fully understand what is happening in terms of these climate-related events. Then the issue of hydrological modeling, I think this is very key. Yes, it's almost extremely difficult to model cyclones because these are highly unpredictable and the magnitude and frequency at times, we don't have the capacity to do modeling of that nature. But however, what you can do is, you can still go ahead and do modeling even after the cyclone is struck. Because now you understand how much rainfall has fallen, what has happened to the dams in terms of storages and how much is flowing after the cyclone. So you should be able to tell that, well, this cyclone has happened, but the consequences are like A, B, C, D. For example, that, well, the water is now coming down. You can tell the spatial extent of the flooding and therefore, people be able to take appropriate action on time. So this is just one initiative of the SADAC ICOS, but there are other regional initiatives which are there. But my emphasis is really on capacity building, flood modeling and monitoring, as well as transmission of data. If these systems fail, then you are unable to assist people on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Madamombe. Can we give him a round of applause, although we are not happy? I think what we are really asking of everybody here, very humbly, is, this is what my colleagues have proposed, based, is based on data and information management. But is there additional contributions that we think, as SADAC experts on water, we can make in a submission that can then be brought to the attention of our principals? Just a few, I don't think we are asking for a massive contribution, but just so that we at least are seen to be doing something as well. Doctor?
Is it on? Okay, thanks. My contribution would be on on the infrastructure reinforcement. Often at times, I've seen some bridges were damaged there. But often at times, when we develop infrastructure, as had been the case there, some of them have been developed during the old period before 1975 in Bayra. What I think we should pay attention to now is that with the reconstruction, that somewhere, somehow, we must reinforce the infrastructure for that not to fail. Failure of infrastructure during a disaster is a problem. And I think we should really pay attention to that, that's my small contribution.
Thank you, the Chairperson of Global Water Partnership, thank you. Other contributions, sir, at the back? I'll come to you in front after.
I will speak in Portuguese.
Sorry. Sorry. I'm not sure if we have any translators. Does anybody have the capability to at least give us the big points of what my colleague is going to say in Portuguese?
Okay, I will try.
Oh, okay, thank you.
According to the infrastructure, I will like to talk about resilience. Yeah, because we are at the fourth industrial revolution and we need to make our infrastructure resilient for this natural climate-related risks. It's my contribution, thank you.
Thank you, sir. In other words, you are talking about climate resilient infrastructure. Can you, sir, I'll come to you in that.
Mine is on the enhanced monitoring. I know it has already been spoken, but I just wanted to enforce it. I think it's very, very important. I don't know if our Zambia, our Zimbabwean colleagues have automated stations for monitoring water levels and henceforth, even the flow measurements and the like, improving the spatial coverage and distribution of water monitoring networks that can automate the calculation of these parameters. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes and no. They have some stations which were installed under SADAC ICOS and also an initiative that was done under the Pungwe program too. But I would like to say that in general, the spatial coverage is quite poor. I can say the same even for Mozambique. If you look at the Pungwe, the Buzi and the SAWE, there's needs to actually improve on the monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have your comment, your input, sir?
In terms of, this is quite okay. But the issue we just want to raise, maybe you can accommodate it as well, is the transmission of the flood to the communities. How do they receive that, look, you are in an area to be flooded? If that can be addressed and also, where are they going to go? You saw that the whole city was flooded. So what sort of measures are to be put in place? Mitigation, say, look, if such an event happens, you can go to some higher ground, there's some shelter or something. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I think my colleague is helping me with notes, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think for these kind of disasters, more specific on floods, there are two things, we have preparedness and response. Preparedness now comes to like flood forecasting, something like that. Now, the response is quite critical and I think that's what he's talking about. Like, how prepared, the response process when such an event happens? And when you deal with cyclones, it's totally different from normal floods. Because if it is normal floods, you can do the normal routing processes and get a time lag. But for cyclones, I saw that a lot, I think on 15th or so, yeah. So I thought that people are alert and they could be able to know move. But then, what is the preparedness? How are people prepared psychologically and even the government processes? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's very tricky. Because even what my colleague is saying there, sometimes with a cyclone, at least the way I've seen it with this one, it hits the, what do you call, the coastal area first. So that is already flooded. By the time the big amounts of rainfall fall on the catchment, the coastline is already flooded, so. I don't know, I think maybe let's try to tease it out with our minds here collectively and see what else we think can be done.
I think I would probably make just one intervention to say, one of the challenges we've been having, especially in hydrometry and data collection, especially with high costs, from some of our experience, is the inherent lack of resources to maintain and operate. Allocation of resources to this sector and to the particular in hydrology, where you have to compete with other, especially at government level, with other sectors. We always come last. You would find that in some governments, decisions we made, look guys, what does this hydrology of yours bring us? I think this serves as an example of how important it is to have data and information that can assist in decision-making to warn so that people are better placed to respond and get away from the dangerous area. I don't know how we can phrase it to say, one of the things that we recommend, if this is to reach the highest level of decision-making, that allocation of resources should actually be enhanced to support activities of this nature.
Yeah, I know we are water people, so I'm really trying to get us restricted to only water.
Yeah, I know.
Because when you talk about evacuation, I don't know if it was you, in that, sir. The whole city was flooded. I don't know who mentioned evacuation. The whole city was flooded. So it could be that the planning of the entire city,
Has been destroyed.
Something has to be done about it. Without saying that you must move the city, but we are almost saying that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, just a quick one. Obviously, we are looking at it from the water perspective, although ordinarily, we have to look at it in totality through the whole program of the disaster risk reduction. But from our own side, what we are seeing here is probably the ideal that we'd want to see on the ground. And this is obviously a program that is going to take some time to really take us to some kind of perfection. But what would be interesting, given what happened, is in terms of the data that we could get at the time we were struck, what kind of data did we have that could have been disseminated? Did we have any data or anything? I think it is important because it will help us to diagnose whether this is just an issue of data availability in transmission of such data or whether even the minimal data that we could have had when the situation occurred could have helped us maybe in terms of mitigation of the situation that actually occurred. So what is it that is on the ground that we can say was provided, but there's deficiencies on the basis of this really ideal situation that we are striving for?
Thank you, Ndemakumbe. I'm just asking, we did not organize this as a formal meeting, but we just have to have an indication, we want to have an indication of the people that made a contribution. If you can just put your name and your organization, that's all, or whatever you're comfortable with. Any other inputs? Let's just, or madam, I'll come to you after. Just the name and the organization.
Okay, my name is Winkemets Joseph. I really appreciate this. I came here to the water discussion, the web discussion, but by office, I work in the Botswana Red Cross Society. So what usually is concerned for me and I think as water engineers here, you really have contributed a lot if you can look at it from that angle. You realize most, within Southern Africa, most of our towns, our villages, our settlements, you know, are along, you know, water catchments areas. So if, from that angle, the moment we do our catchment plan and strategies, we incorporate from start the contingency, the risk and disaster contingency plans already in that. This will really help a lot because it informs the issue of evacuations. It informs the issue of planning already while as the town grows. You know, I think that's where it has to be. Then that's where it starts for both preparedness and both the response.
Risk reduction. My sister?
Hi, my name is Shami Sukumbare. I am representing South Africa, but Zimbabwean by birth. I was quite concerned around the comment regarding the data management and collection and member states not being able to afford the maintenance or the database collection. I mean, we've now, we're now in a position where we have infrastructure damage to insurmountable costs because surely something like a reserve fund should be allocated within SADAC for those member states who are unable to pay at that given time. Because, I mean, the data is necessary to prevent such huge devastation like this going forward. So I think that's one of the mechanisms that we can maybe put in place to ensure that we always have the right information at the right time.
Thank you very much. I think like Mr. Ramu Edidewa was saying, the networks, data collection, data processing is not very fashionable with our cooperative partners. I know my brother from the African Development Bank has left, but this is what we get when we don't know what we are managing. And when you don't monitor, you don't know what you're managing, you just watch.
Thank you. Just in connection with the same, I don't know whether there are some hydrological assessments that have been done previously before this, just especially with regards to inadequately spatial distributed networks like and properly improperly engaged catchments. Because in Zambia, we've had some case studies of where we have done hydrological assessments of catchments that have not probably engaged as a basis of trying to alleviate some of these disasters. Because it's, I think it should be something that could be possibly considered. Then secondly, maybe, I don't know whether it would be possible to consider using remotely sensed kind of approaches to doing hydrological assessments. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we start with the gentleman, he hasn't spoken yet?
Okay, yeah. For me, I think I will focus more on not the big calamity that we have had, but the smaller, because every year, we usually have these natural disasters. But because they are usually smaller, they are not publicized and we are not aware of them. I'll give an example, in Malawi, the southern part of Malawi, every year we experience floods and every year people die. The question is, why are we failing to find a solution? It's every year, but it's normally not publicized because maybe it's only 17 people who dies like that. So like, people from those areas, it's an issue also to do with our settlement laws. Okay, people are settling on riverbanks, which normally are prone to floods every year, every year. And that area, for example, now, they are used to these floods to the extent that they no longer construct like good houses, they just construct slums knowing that in December or January, there are going to be floods, they are going to be washed away, Red Cross will come to distribute inputs and all that. It has also become a business in a way for the community. So me, I would say also that the leaders, I think we need to strengthen the settlement laws. Because it's, in Malawi, like it's being preached, like you people from this area, you have to move out and all that, but now to enforce that is a problem. So I wanted to narrow down on the smaller disasters, which I believe that in the different countries, they do happen, but there's nothing being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Give you just five more minutes and then the youth program can start, yes, sir?
Yeah, maybe one thing, I've been trying to think about this. You see, the agriculture sector have been very smart to account for their contribution to the GDP and jobs, but the water sector, we have not done that. I've been battling on a situation whereby we should also have economics of data to really come up with a good study. Like, what is the economics of data? Like, if we have data, the opportunity costs or the kind of decision we make might be smarter and we might save this much. If you don't have data, we are going to make some maybe funny decisions because the politicians will still make decisions anyway, whether with the data or without, with the data, yeah. So how can we come up with a good study in the SADAC region? To quantify the economics of data. Because politicians want to know about money. Also, the development partners also want to know money. So let's put money in data.
No, thank you. Although it's negative, but I think it's also a very good indicator of how valuable data is. I think that's what you're saying, sir. Yes, Kumulani at the back, if you can use a microphone, the room is big.
Okay, thanks. I think my issue is to do with the post-disaster information, the type of information that we need to be sending out. We have been seeing pictures of dead bodies and broken bridges. We have been seeing pictures of dead bodies and broken bridges, I think, which is a sad part of what we've been seeing. But in terms of trying to influence policy direction, I think even from a SADAC level, we need to start sending out information on probably what has been the cost and impact in terms of health, in terms of the impact on food production, on energy. I'm coming from Zimbabwe, where a whole tea plantation that was, has been thriving for years, has been wiped out. And we understand the costs that have been incurred with that. So there are little activities that are taking place to quantify that. But if they can be collected and that information sent out to people so that they understand the real effects on their livelihoods, I think it will also influence even their input into policy dialogues going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we'll take one or so last hands and then wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you. For me, I have another perspective. I don't think if I'll be out of point, but this is the perspective from me. If you dig deep from the geography and you will find it that even some research has been conducted, which says into the years to come, some of the islands and some of the areas in the continent will be flooded with water. They will disappear. And some of the islands have started to witness that one. So if you went through and if trying to find what is the causes, sometimes we may end up addressing the wrong causes. I think the issue is not only climate change. There is an issue also of the movement of plate. If you go to plate tectonics theory and continental drift theories, they have also some valuable information that movement of plates also in the causes. And there is no way you can avoid that movement. Because look, those countries in Eastern Asia, Indonesia, Japan, they were flooded at some point. But then life goes as usual. But I don't think if they have said it's a climate change to them in East Asia, I don't think so. It's all about the tectonic movement within the oceans and in the continent. So more studies are needed to understand this. Unless otherwise, we will come up with the wrong solutions. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I think we can always agree with that. And maybe because the youth are here, maybe it's a plea from the elders that can you come up with innovations around some of these things? How do you monitor some of the elements that my brother is bringing up? And maybe put all of those together to come up with ideas that can place us in a better position. But I think what we are saying, which is why we are focusing on information, is that as long as we can at least monitor, we'll be able to warn each other with the limited time that may still be there. But can I please thank everybody for making a contribution to this topic? And to tell Elisha that whatever we have said here is actually in addition to infrastructure. Because without dams, you cannot operate and manage the flow of your rivers. And I know those rivers there don't have many dams, except maybe one or two in Zimbabwe. Can I please thank everybody for your attention and your contribution? Thank you. We will generate a summary and submit it to SADAC.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we are starting now the other session for the youth. But everybody is welcome to be part of this session. At this juncture, we have youth from the sixteen SADAC countries who are here. And also, we also have officials from SADAC and also from Global Water Partnership. So at this juncture, on behalf of GWP, I'm just in the shoes of Alex, which are a bit big for me. He's there waving. Yeah. Can I welcome everybody to this session? This session basically is about the SADAC with youth network. And we are going to talk about a program that we are starting on capacitating the youth in the region. Without wasting much time, because of time, I call upon the SADAC representative to make a few remarks. SADAC representative? Somebody from SADAC? Okay. Yeah, I think let's move forward. Just for observing, is it possible just to sit close here? Because we are just a small group so that we can interact better than sitting afar from each other. At this point, let me welcome now the Chair of GWP, Dr. Chippa.